I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 15th. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can have roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Councilmember Schickling.
Here.
Mayor Protim Lavelle.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Marshall is not in attendance tonight.
Thank you, and we have a presentation this evening from Southern California Edison, who will provide an update on utility service and Catalina operations. I believe they have an on-screen presentation. Thank you.
Since I'm an employee of Southern California Edison, I have to recuse myself.
We were going to ask if you had to because it's a presentation.
Scott, for the presentation, does Councilwoman Schickling need to recuse herself?
If the council's going to ask any questions, yes, she should. If you want to.
Questions.
Yes, if there's any questions, she has to recuse herself.
Okay.
It's all good.
All right.
Thanks, Mary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members and city staff. Selena Luna, Government Relations Manager at Southern California Edison. Thank you so much for allowing us to make a presentation this evening. I wanted to call up my colleague Dave Spencer, who is the permanent Catalina Island Senior Production Manager at our Pebbley Beach Generating Station to give a brief introduction to the council. And we have a presentation for you after the introduction.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dave Spencer. I'm the new Senior Production Manager for SCE on the island. So I've only been in this role for a few months, but I've been on the island for about 11 months now. I've been with SCE for almost four years, but I've got about 23 years' experience in generating stations. I know we've got some projects coming up, and you do as well, that we were working with, you know, together. So I look forward to our monthly meetings. And I think Selena is going to be providing you my contact information, but I do have some cards with me if you'd like that. I do ask that we still go through Selena when we need to. Unfortunately, I'm not billing our customer service, but I am happy to answer any questions since I am on the island now. Any questions for me so far?
Thank you so much. Welcome to the island.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. And like I said, it's great to meet you all. I think next we're going to have Scott Todd come up and talk about PSPS.
Good evening. Name is Scott Todd. I'm the Senior Manager for TND Transmission and Distribution on the island. I'm a peer of David Spencer. Today, I'm going to briefly be speaking about PSPS, Public Safety Power Shut-Off. Just recently this year, at the beginning of the year, the island experienced some outages on two of our circuits in two different events. First time that the island has seen some of these public safety power shut-off events that primarily have been seen more often on the mainland. These two particular events impacting the circuits are in the portion on the map above that have the hash line through them. The areas that have the circle with the bell on them is a notification being sent out. We have fire services and weather services that constantly monitor fuel conditions, winds, just high fire threats. If there's an opportunity to make a notification preemptively prior to an outage, that's always our goal because we understand that an outage to anybody is inconvenient. But at the same time, we want to make sure to try to buy down that risk of a high-fire threat and try to keep the communities safe. The portion, bottom right-hand side here in town, shows an area that was under consideration, not ended up being affected. And then there's a, at the very bottom, a resource center. We do set up a resource center that is an opportunity for residents of the island to be able to come in and get resources that would be available during outages that are already experienced. Also, at the very bottom, there's an opportunity to visit our outage map. You can manage your notifications through this. Select how you'd like to receive notifications for PSPS events. So I highly suggest utilizing that particular link there to be able to update your notifications in case of future events.
Scott, is it possible, I've signed up for these both text and email, and it's great to know ahead of time when the outages are going to occur. One of the questions that I felt bad, because I know Selena was dealing with so much more on the mainland as well, besides just us during this last round. The notifications are not super helpful on specifics. And so at a time where we thought that the outage was potentially impacting the entire island, it was actually just certain lines that were going down. With that, those lines aren't necessarily named in a way that makes it clear what zone is what. And so I know you have them mapped here on the map. I don't know if there's a way on that page to possibly have a standard, like, key of what each zone is located and called to help people understand exactly what is out and what is not. It would have, for the city at least, it would have kind of cleared up that there actually weren't outages scheduled for the city. They were more interior-based because of winds and everything else going on. Is that something that can be modified, do you think?
Something definitely to take into consideration, see if we can enhance that. Continuous improvement is something we're continuing to try to embrace and make sure we can refine this.
Yeah.
Just to give a little bit of history on this. So as you see, the hash lines there heading across the island. So there's a couple of isolation points where we were able to isolate those circuits. And so although it said that circuit was going to be impacted, there was an opportunity based on weather services and fire services analysis to be able to not affect everybody, particularly also in the city of Avalon.
Yeah.
When we could isolate and keep them safe there and minimize that impact and only affect the higher-threat locations. But to your point, absolutely, an opportunity to embrace. So we'll look into that.
Yeah, I think it may also additionally help your staff at a time of heightened need not have to be impacted by so many calls from us, asking if it's going to impact people in town. Trying to understand exactly where those outages will be would be, I think, helpful for your crew to not have to get a higher volume of calls back or two, so.
Because we do get this area, this area, but we don't know.
Sure.
What the area is.
Yeah, and I recognize this is very new to the island. So I've been covering the island for the last four years, and this is the first event that has affected the island for PSPS. This is something that's been more refined over here. We've had more impacts on the mainland with this, and so we're a little bit further along on how that has transverse. We've scheduled lessons learned, met with stakeholders across the island to get that feedback, just as you're presenting here, because it's important for us to help be good advocates for the communities here and try to refine that.
But it's great information to get.
It really is, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it was super helpful.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I will give it to Luke now.
Good evening, members of the council, city staff. Excited to be here, share an update on the water utility. So first, we'll start off with a proxy for groundwater in Catalina Middle Ranch Reservoir. So a great picture. That was actually taken in June, but pretty comparable to how it would look right now. We're at 98.4% capacity as of early April. That's 1036 acre-feet. And while we observe a slight decrease from being at max capacity as we were earlier this year, we are under construction with the next phase of desal enhancements, and so that's what I'll get into next. And first, just providing a quick background. You know, we see desalination as a drought-resilient water source for Catalina. We are pursuing them consistent with what was identified in the 2017 Catalina Desalination Feasibility Study and also the 2021 Catalina Drought Continency Plan that identified a phase implementation of enhancements. Right now, we're in Phase 1, and that looks at upgrading the saltwater well system, the treatment system, and a portion of the distribution and storage system. So what's changed since we were here last, about this time last year? Everything in red in that schedule table is what's changed. We're encouraged to report that all environmental permits for the construction projects have been issued as late, or as most recent as December of last year was when we received the last ones, and that allowed us to mobilize construction at the treatment plant. So those photos you see are of Pebbley Beach Generating Station and the desal footprint. Construction continues. We're targeting to be complete to accommodate a return to service in June and, you know, targeting getting the plant back up and online with the peak season that's approaching. The project also received a grant from the California Department of State Water Resources, $10 million. We've invoiced $2 million of that so far, and we're continuing that effort. The, you see, we've differentiated the treatment plant and the saltwater well system. We're still working on easements for the saltwater well system, and as soon as we have those, we would start construction there. Right now, we postponed construction until September, targeting an easement by June. And that would put a ready-for-service by the end of this year. So when we were here last year, that was different. We're targeting to combine mobilizations, but we've had to separate them just due to the easement there. That's all I have to report on the desal project and the water unless there's questions before I hand it off to Selena for billing update.
Not much.
All right.
Good evening, council. So recently, it was brought to the attention of Edison about customers talking about recent billing issues. First, I wanted to share that there is actually a dedicated Catalina Customer Service Support Line with customer service reps that are familiar with the gas, water, and electrical utility. That line operates from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Their phone number is 800-367-8851. 800-367-8851. We encourage any Catalina customer who has not received a bill to contact that number and ask for your bill to be generated. And I also wanted to share that our system is, for billing, is automated, and so sometimes there is a delay in getting the bills out. And that is what we experienced recently that drew a large amount of community attention. In response to that, I've worked internally with billing, and we will be doing no service disconnections until the end of June to allow residents the opportunity to catch up on those bills. We also will have a bilingual customer service representative at next week's Catalina Island Resource Fair that will be held at the church next Thursday. We also will have representatives there that can speak to PSPS if you would like to sign up for CARE or FARA low-income programs, as well as answer any other SCE operational questions. I really want to thank the mayor and the city council for bringing this to our attention and allowing us to look into this further to get solutions for residents. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Real quick, Selena, just to make clear, are your customers, residents, can go to the fair and ask specific questions on their account if they have trouble with the billing?
Yes, you can also, if you cannot make the fair, call the dedicated 800 line, which is specific to Catalina residents.
And then the person that you will have at the fair is bilingual?
Yes.
Beautiful. Thank you.
I just had a few questions on how it happens. It seems like this is the second or third time that we've seen this type of lack of billing causing massive payment issues for people. The, I sent you some of them specifically, but the majority of people that I've been seeing have had anywhere from an 800 to a $1,500 or more dollar bill that's been presented to them as past due. I'm not sure how that's happening. Is there a way to ensure that this doesn't happen again? I've talked to people about maybe, you know, should you go back to paper billing so you can make sure to manage what your usual average is so you know what you should pay? Should you be paying an estimated amount? But a sock in the gut of that much money at one time for most families is not manageable, and they're having a tough time paying it back. Is there a way to ensure that doesn't happen?
Yes, we are making internal operational changes to assist with that.
Yeah.
And that should be cleared out and updated by the completion of the next billing cycle, which is why we're allowing the extension for residents to pay the bill through June 30th with no disconnection notice. So we were obviously made aware that many people were experiencing a challenge in paying these bills that had come a couple months behind their expected schedule.
Yeah, I mean, based on the number of comments I'm seeing, it feels like it's more than, I mean, at first I thought it was maybe a couple dozen, but it feels like it's upwards of 100-plus. So it seems like it's a pretty significant issue that needs to be addressed. I'm glad that you're addressing it, but how do we ensure that doesn't happen again?
We're making internal operational changes to make sure that this doesn't happen to the magnitude it did recently.
Okay. Is there a way to get an update on how progress is going, maybe once a quarter, just to make sure this doesn't happen again?
Absolutely. Next time we're at council, I'll be sure to include an update on that for you.
Okay. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Selena, last question. I know, I believe we touched on it before, but just because you brought up the CARE and the FARA billing assistance programs. I know that we have a lot of folks that do work two to three jobs, so unfortunately, they may not qualify. Is there a way for Edison to look into, I know, because we're unique, so I know this ask is usual along with everything else, but is there a program we can create for Avalon residents?
I, not specific to CARE, FARA, but I'm looking into a different program that could potentially help Avalon residents, and it would, I would probably have an update on that closer to the fall.
Thank you, Selena.
But it would be specific and unique for Avalon.
Thank you.
Perfect. I will invite my colleague Ryan up to give the next update.
And while he's coming up, I'll just remind everyone, the Resource Fair is on Thursday. Will be at the church hall all afternoon. Please make use of the services that are here. This is meant to help everyone in the community. There's a broad variety of services that will be there. In particular, Edison, I think it's helpful to have them on the ground, and thank you guys for being present and having someone there that can assist everybody. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ryan Stevenson. I'm here to provide an update on the rate increases for the water utility that are already in effect for 2025 and the proposed rate increases for 2025 for the gas utility. First, we'd like to start with a little bit of background. We'll start with the water utility. We filed an application for a rate increase in October of 2020, and the commission issued a final decision in December of 2023. In our request, we asked for a subsidy from electric customers of approximately $30 million. So we requested to recover approximately $30 million of water utility costs from our 5 million customers, electric customers. The commission denied that request and instead issued a very large revenue increase for the water utility. The prior authorized revenue was approximately $4.1 million, and they authorized an increase to $10.5 million, so approximately 156% increase. In order to manage the affordability of that increase, the commission ordered a five-year phase-in and then additional longer-term phase-ins for other memo account balances that we had. So the first phase-in went into effect in 2024. So we went from approximately $4.1 million up to about $5.5 million. For 2025, as you can see on the chart, the revenue is set at approximately $7.7 million, and that's approximately a 40% increase from the year prior. And you can see over those five years, relatively large increases in 2026 in revenue, 2027, and 2028. In 2029 and beyond, it's approximately 1% out to the year 2039. Also, as part of that decision, the commission encouraged SCE to seriously consider alternative recovery resources, especially the visitor boat fee in advance of future GRCs. So you can see the average water bill is going from approximately, for residential customers, your largest customer group, approximately $87 from 2024 to approximately $141 in 2025, and that's approximately 60% increase. Likewise, approximately 60% increases for your CARE customers, as well as your largest commercial customers. That increase is a result of that increase in revenue plus a reduction in the sales forecast. Last year, our sales forecast was approximately 115 million gallons, and we sold approximately 105 million gallons, so 10 million gallons less. And so we've reduced the forecast to approximately 103 million gallons this year. Shifting to the gas utility, we filed a gas rate case coincidentally in December of 2023. That case is still pending. We did enter into a settlement with the Public Advocates Office of the PUC. That proposed settlement for gas would increase bills in 2025 by approximately, for residential customers, by approximately 7%. It would reduce bills for the residential CARE customers by approximately 10%. And then a similar increase for your commercial customers of approximately 8%. The reason there's a relatively large reduction for your residential CARE customers is because we increased the CARE discount, the proposal, excuse me, the proposal is to increase it to approximately 32.5% to match the discount for our water customers and our electric customers. And then you can see, again, there are increases for your residential and your commercial customers in 2026, and then slight increases and decreases in 2027 and 2028. Are there any questions on the rate increases for 2025, or are those in the future years?
I think part of the thing to remember for the community at home is that that's another portion where they're seeing an increase in a larger bill right now, and especially if it's a multiple months for that bill, that that additional percentage, the 40% increase, is part of what they're seeing in that amount of money. I think a lot of people, unfortunately, were surprised by that. We, I think, had multiple meetings where you guys discussed what the potential rate increases were. We had meetings about, you know, stakeholders trying to fight those increases, trying to see if they could be shared amongst the entire ratepayer kind of sphere. And so this is the result in turn of part of that as well.
Yeah, I believe so. So those billing issues, in some cases, we go back and bill up to three months, and so there's probably a compounding effect with the rate increases that went into effect in January for the water.
Yeah, because if they're seeing, I mean, it's, you know, an additional $60 a month, possibly, that's 180 right there for those three months, in addition to the money they didn't pay that they weren't expecting. So there's no way to escape that, unfortunately. It is what it is. But I'm just trying to help people understand why they might see such a jump in their bills. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, council. That concludes our presentation for this evening.
Thank you.
Selena. Thank you.
All righty. So now we'll have, oh, yeah, if you can get Mary. Thanks, Steve. Finance Director Matthew Baker will provide an overview of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. Thanks, Edison, for coming. We'll see you guys on Thursday at the Resource Fair, next Thursday.
Good evening, council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Tonight, I'm going to give a, hopefully, a quick presentation, just kind of a recap of where we're at in the current year budget and kind of the initial revenue estimates heading into the next budget year. So the cycle of the presentations will go tonight, kind of focusing on where we're at and from a revenue standpoint, where we're looking at for next fiscal year, and then the next two meetings in May to discuss the capital budget and the operating budgets. So this slide here is, it shouldn't look new. It's in all my budget presentations. Again, the city should operate a structurally balanced budget. That's where our recurring revenues meet or exceed our recurring expenditures. Our estimates should be conservative to ensure adequate funding. Again, I set the targets at a level to where we don't need to have a record-setting year each year just to break even. And so you'll see tonight, as a lot of the revenue estimates are going to come ahead of where we had budgeted, and that was by design. Again, the city should be transparent in its forecasting and underlying assumptions. New revenues should go towards fixed cost increases first, then replenishing reserves, and then significant long-term liabilities before other discretionary expenditures. And then just as a caveat, these are all estimates. As we're developing the budget, all the numbers, at least from next year, are subject to change as we work with the department heads on their budgets. So this is a breakdown of the general fund. We had a beginning balance, or reserves, of $16.2 million. We had a beginning balance or reserves of 16.2 million and you can see we had significant planned draws on our reserves in the budget for this year of about 4.5 million, bringing down our ending balance at the end of the year to 11.7. What we've seen is our operating revenues are about 1.5 million higher than where we had budgeted them and I'll go into detail as to, to why. And then our operating, our capital outlays net of our grant revenues right now are on pace to be about 1.5 million lower. And so that's how you get a $3 million difference for the ending balance. So right now I expect we'll finish the year somewhere close to 14.8, 14.9 million in our general funds unrestricted fund balance or its reserves. So this slide is just kind of a breakdown of what we had budgeted, where we were at as of March 31st and where I expect we'll finish the year. Again, that just shows how we get that 1.5 million difference from our, our updated estimate to where we had budgeted. TOTs on track to exceed budget estimates by about 300,000. So we're more or less matching what we did last year, but again, we were budgeted ahead or we budgeted below where we finished last year. And so it looks like we'll be about matching last year or up about 300,000 compared to the budget. The big change on here is property tax. This one's going to require a little additional homework on my end, but not to go into all the details, there's a residual property tax we get as part of our ROPS distribution. We had a, a debt payment that's being repaid this year, being the last year's payment. But the payment this year was a nominal amount and so we got more residual property tax than I had budgeted we would receive. And I believe this is going to actually be a recurring increase since the, the debt payment will be paid off this year. So I'm going to do additional research on that, but our property tax revenue right now, I'm estimating to be about 600,000 higher than where we had budgeted. And then the other change is in interest income. We're up 224,000 from where we had budgeted. Again, I went really conservative in the budget last year as far as revenue estimates for interest income and that's an area where I'm going to try to get closer to where we're actually going to, to finish the year going forward. But really those three are the big drivers between that, where we had budgeted and where I think we'll finish the year on a revenue standpoint. Not to spend too much time on this slide, but this is just looking at March of '23, March of '24 and March of '25, showing that, you know, my estimates are really in line with kind of historically how we do April through June. And then again, this slide here is just a breakdown of revenues fiscal '19 actual to 25 estimates for TOT. Just bringing this one up to highlight that in fiscal '19 pre-COVID, we did 5.4 million. The first year impacted by COVID, our TOT was about 4.3 million. And then you can see that increase particularly in fiscal year '22 and we've sort of been plateauing, leveling off to 7.8, which is where I think we'll finish the year around. For the purpose of kind of figuring out where we're going to finish the year, I'm assuming we're going to spend our full operating budget. So really looking next at the capital, you can see we had 10.4 million in planned capital outlays in the budget, but in discussions with Bob, I think we'll finish the year somewhere closer to 4.5 million. Again, with those projects, the unspent budget portions rolling over into the next fiscal year. And so next meeting or the, the second meeting in May, we'll go over the capital budget in more detail. But what you're going to see is a lot of the projects are the projects that were in this year's budget just rolled forward to the next fiscal year. Here is a breakdown of our capital projects in the general fund, just to give kind of a budget to actual update for these projects. The two that I just wanted to, or three I was going to highlight is the Five Corners project. You can see the total project budget, 5.3 million. We've spent 1.6 million to date and between now and June 30th, we expect another 500,000 in activity on that project. Again, the specifics on status of the project, I'm sure Bob's more than capable to, to provide those. I'm just kind of giving from a revenue stand, or an expenditure standpoint where I think we'll finish the year. The other project that we'll be bringing back to council is Crescent Avenue Stairs. That should be the final update to council when we bring that one, but we are, we will have additional expenditures related to that project. And then the third one, just to highlight, is the park improvements that are going on. To date, we have spent 140,000 and that's primarily was the purchase of the new playground equipment and the rest of that being the, the replacement of the sponge material that the, the equipment sits on. So you can see we had 10.4 million budgeted and we should finish the year somewhere around 4.5 million in capital outlays. So switching focus to the harbor fund, you can see we, in the harbor fund, the working capital, so that's its current assets minus its current liabilities was around 3 million to start the year. And we were planning on finishing the year, really spending everything in the harbor fund. And so that's, you have grant revenues of 7.3 million, but capital outlays of 11 million. So that's really where we were spending all of our reserves in the harbor fund on projects. Again, looking at where our revenue estimates are coming in at, I think we'll finish up about 600,000. And then from a capital outlay standpoint, we will finish about 1.2 million net of grants less than where we had budgeted. And so that's how we get an ending working capital of around 1.9 million. So 600 in increased revenues and 1.2 in deferred capital outlays. Again, this is just a breakdown of our harbor revenues, kind of budget to actual, showing that we're up or I estimate we'll be up around 582,000. The only one that I show that we may not hit where we budgeted was cruise ship warfage. Some of the large, when I set the budget for cruise ship warfage revenues, I estimated 90% occupancy. While a lot of the smaller ships exceed 100%, the larger ships haven't been coming in at 90% occupancy. So a lot of the 5,000 plus passenger ships have been coming in with around 80% occupancy, so around 4,000 passengers. And so that's part of what's, what's driving that shortfall. But again, it's more than made up with the other harbor revenue estimates.
Matt, a question on that real quick. Because we're looking at trying to get to the point where we have agreements in place with the cruise ships, do you feel like that's going to be a much easier number to estimate in general, just because we'll have a baseline of what it's going to be?
It's, it's right now not too hard of a number to estimate. I just really didn't give myself any cushion on, on this one. And part of the reason is I knew other revenues, I had some cushion where I estimated less than where I thought they would likely fall. We, we know what ships are coming in and we know the, the occupancy or the capacity of those ships. And we have a lot of historical numbers on occupancy rates, so generally I have a, a pretty good understanding of where that's going to fall. Cancellations, you know, always happen, so I kind of build that into, into that. But generally we have a pretty good idea of what our cruise ship, and then from a percentage standpoint, we're, you know, less than 1%.
Yeah, not bad at all. Thank you.
And so this is just to show again, compared to last year, our harbor revenues are estimated be slightly down from last year. So we're ahead of our budget estimates, but we are slightly down or estimating will be slightly down from last year. And really what's driving that is cruise ships and then transfer fees. And transfer fees is a tricky one for me because it really, it fluctuates greatly year over year. And so we always try to set that one at, at a lower number and just, you know, accept the good years when they come. But that's really why we're going to finish the year probably slightly down from last year. But again, it's why we don't budget requiring revenues to, to beat the prior year every Again, this is just showing the, the numbers as of March 23 and March 24, to just kind of provide additional support to how I came up with my 25 estimates. So then looking at grant revenues and capital outlays, the, the big project is Aquaria Mole Phase Two. To date, we've spent about 80,000 on that project and between now and June, we're estimating an additional 200,000. So most of that construction spend that we had anticipated starting in this current budget year won't actually start until fiscal year '26 or the upcoming budget year. The, the big spend between now and June is the Green Pier or the Pleasure Pier piling project. And so there's going to be over a million in spend on that between the Green Pier and the Club Dock, Dinghy Dock. So this is just kind of a, a quick look forward to next year's budget. Again, these estimates are, are likely to change. Right now I'm looking at TOT at budgeted where we had budgeted last year. I do think there's a reason to, to believe our TOT is going to actually come in closer to budgeted. So if this year we did 7.8, but we budgeted 7.5, I'm budgeting 7.5, but I think there's a good likelihood it might end up closer to 7.5 than 7.8. Part of that is we do have a major hotel that's under construction and in the, the shoulder season and the winter season, that isn't as impactful because other hotels I think can pick up the slack. But I am curious for the summer months since it's, it's a larger hotel. Sales tax, budgeted relatively flat. Our sales tax consultant actually has it at 1.4 million, but just to, to be conservative, I have it slightly down at 1.35. And again, the other big increase is at the bottom is interest income. I tried to do a better job of, while still being conservative, getting closer to where I think we'll finish the year as far as interest income. And so you can see from budget '25 to budget '26, I'm estimating revenues to be up around 620,000 or 4.8%. But that is below where I'm estimating we're going to finish this year. Similar story in the harbor. The big difference is in cruise ship warfage. We have more of the, the larger vessels right now currently scheduled. I'll have to keep an eye, vessels get scheduled and they get removed from the list, so that number might change, but that's really what's driving the increase in the harbor operating And then lastly, on the capital side, cross-channel warfage currently of the $3 each way, 25% of it we dedicate to, or a little more than 25% we dedicate to harbor capital. And so currently we have it budgeted at 1.4. We're going to finish the year closer to 1.5 and so I have for next year's budget at 1.45. The row below is the cross-channel warfage increase. Should we adopt the increase, what that would mean for next year's budget? So again, we're proposing that increase to take effect in September. And so that's what the impact would be if that were to go into effect. Cruise ship warfage, we already approved that increase, but that's not scheduled to take effect until January. So we are estimating that $2.50 increase to generate 545,000 between January and June of next year. And so those are kind of the, the numbers we're operating off of right now as we're developing the operating and capital budgets for next year.
Great. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
I'm, I'm curious to see, so that extra budget amount is on the agenda tonight with the warfage discussion. So we'll see if we can, what everyone thinks about that. Okay, do we have any announcements or written communications?
I have no announcements.
Nothing.
Okay. Department head reports?
Good af- Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. Public Works has been extremely busy trying to accomplish as many projects prior to Memorial Day. So we're busy, they're busy, busy bees out there. For example, MKS finished the Men's Green Pier flooring. If you haven't seen it yet, please take a peek. It's gorgeous. The Public Works crew will be replacing the partitions, lighting, baby changing tables, the old tile, et cetera. The Public Works crew and harbor maintenance have been working together replacing the Lover's Cove platform and stairs, the railing and the, oh, I just said that, the concrete stairs, my apologies. Last year during the storms, the platform and stairs washed away, so they replaced with new concrete stairs. That, what they did last year was a temporary fix, but what they're replacing now is a permanent fix. They're going to install graded, a graded platform, speed railing and cable railing. That upgrade will also be really nice, so we're all looking forward to that. The biggest project, I think, this fiscal year for Public Works will be the demo and installation of the new playground and rubberized surface at Kids Park and Kennabe Park. The crew started some of the expansion and relocation of utilities this week and then next week will be full demo of the old playground and equipment at Kids Park. The week of the 28th will be the installation of the new playground and then the week of May 5th will be the new rubberized flooring at Kids Park and Kennabe Park. So I think this project is really what everybody is excited for. On top of all of these projects, the crew is still continuing to do the routine maintenance of cleaning parks, streets and facilities. They're still helping with some CIP projects as the guard rail at the top of Burma Trail and Five Corners. The mechanics are also busy. They're doing the preventative maintenance on vehicles, getting everything ready for the summer. They're ensuring all the equipment, boats are operational and ready for the season. So if you see the Public Works crew out there, please thank them. They're working really hard and they really would appreciate the accolades. Thank you.
Been enjoying seeing them working on the Sombro Fountain as well, getting that work done. It's been a fun project to see take place, so yeah, super thankful for them.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, here to talk about some capital projects. Five Corners continuing as you see out there. Curb gutter sidewalk, we've got two blocks open. We've made agreements with the property owners as we go. Pretty much they're happy with what we're doing and the time period that we're doing it. We're trying to get all of that work on those sides with those property owners done by Memorial Day. So the main part of the work, you know, there'll still be some work to do there, but the, the demo and then the pourback of the curb gutter sidewalk, you know? So they seem to be very happy about that, that getting done and, and getting that attention on it. Let's see, also the Green Pier, we have executed the contract with Jilk on that. Tomorrow morning, we have the pre-job and then our anticipated start dates by 4/28. So right at the end of the month, they have approximately three weeks that they're saying that it will take them to drive the pile. The piles on both the Green Pier and then also the, the Club Dock, getting prepped with the two piles that are going there. And we anticipate that the way we're going to deliver that one now is we're going to get the piles driven on the side of what's existing there. And then on Wednesday and Thursday out there, there's five holes they're going to drill 20 feet deep, six inches in diameter, and then they'll plug those and then they'll take that back to lab, create a report that goes back to water board, crossing fingers that, you know, everything is going to come back clean on that and then we can just close out that project for good. Slater Waterproofing, they're actually delayed a week for their, the ones that are being on wastewater treatment plant and also working on the saltwater pump station. They'll be here on 4/28 with True Cruise, so that's good news. We also assisted Yacht Club with permits. They have an emergency repair of six piles on our building out there, so they're taking that on. We assisted them on getting that emergency permit from the CCC and they had about two weeks of work with Conley. Elbow, we're working on project plans for potential September project, but well, we've already upgraded the railing on that one side and we're talking about getting the upgrade on the railing on the other side where we've got the wood sidewalk there, so we get rid of the, the belt railing. And then paving, we're working on procurement of a pavement project and that's going to be, you know, we're at this point in the year, so we're thinking it's going to be September. So that's kind of a messy project and that's, you know, that's where we have all the holes and the plates and all that. So got to get everybody prepared for that and then it's, it's a pretty big deal. And that may dovetail pretty nicely with what's happening at Five That may dovetail pretty nicely with what's happening at Five Corners too and some of the things we have. And so we could see a lot of new paving around town that will, and then leading to the seal coat through the whole community. And then everything will be, look like it's new again, you know, for a while till we have another water failure. But otherwise, any questions?
No. It's a ton that you guys are managing. Thank you.
Okay.
Matthew King, Sheriff's Captain, Avalon Station. Since our last meeting, we had a hundred and fifty log entries by the deputies. A hundred and four of those were observations made by the deputies and thirteen, I'm sorry, forty-six were calls for service. We have thirteen traffic stops included. There were no arrests. Aside of that, we have some exciting news. We have some drone coming to the island now. We're getting a drone starting next week. We're still sending deputies to training, so hopefully we'll have enough pilots to be able to actually respond to calls on the water and look for lost hikers and stuff like that. It's, it's great technology to use and it's really a force multiplier for us because they can see at night, which we can't see obviously, so you can see anybody moving in the bushes or anything else. It's great to have. It's, it's a big advantage for us. We also have a female Spanish speaker deputy starting tonight and an additional one next month. So we'll have a total of four deputies that speak Spanish as of May twenty-fifth. And we also have a dispatcher that speaks Spanish as well. So we're bumping up our Spanish speakers at the station. It's, it's something I've been pushing for since I got here and it's, it's finally working. So hopefully it stays that way for, for a few years. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Hey, I was asking you, when you have new deputies coming over, is there an Avalon-specific orientation that they go through?
Yeah, we, you know, we give them the municipal code and we get to work with a deputy for a while and kind of get to know what's going on. It is a different pace and a way of life than over town. But yeah, and they sit down with me and make, and make sure they're on the same page. The female tonight is starting, she has been here in the past. She was out for a few injuries, like a couple surgeries actually, so she's back. So she knows the community. But yeah, she'll be working with a deputy tonight and tomorrow night just to kind of get back into the swing of things.
Okay. I was just wondering if it's possible perhaps for city staff, city manager to work with you to provide some topics. I know that we've had in discussions before about higher priority items or things to be aware of that are different, if that's something we could formalize at least to have you have available for them for, for the first couple of weeks they're training and working here, just so that it makes it an even smoother transition for everybody.
Yeah, that'd be great, actually. I like that. And as a matter of fact, it'd be nice to have them come in and talk to everybody here on city staff so everybody knows who they are, you know, ahead of time, that we're not waiting to meet them after six months.
That'd be great.
So I think it's, the sooner they know everybody, the better off we are.
For sure.
Yep. We'll make that happen.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. I feel like I have to like ante it, like you're bringing your entourage with you. I'm assuming you've had it.
I brought backup. So, good evening. Kevin Schmidt, Harbor Master. So I brought my backup here. I was going to do their presentation first, but I think I'm going to make them wait because they could stand up here in front of council and be on TV as long as humanly possible. So, real quickly, just a quick little harbor update. Bob was talking about the piling project. We got the walkthrough tomorrow and it's supposed to start on the twenty-eighth and run for about three weeks. So there's going to be a little bit of impact to foot traffic on the pier, but not nearly like we had two years ago with the big blue crane out there. So foot traffic should be a lot less impact. Since we're working from a barge, there'll be a little more impact to the boat traffic, but we hope to mitigate that, take one float out at a time so we can still use the rest of the pier. So we have a plan to hopefully take care of that and keep everything in operation as well. Again, that starts on the twenty-eighth. We also have, the Barbara Pearson doc is wrapping up. I just got pictures of that, so hopefully that'll be over here in the next week or two and get that installed and get that back in operation as well. Club Dock, I will mention one thing. Bob was talking about that, what we're going to do, put a ramp on that that we can pull up and down, keep it in operation longer throughout the year. The one big thing is that the ramp will be ADA compliant, so it'll be our first ADA compliant ramp in the harbor. So it's kind of a, kind of a big thing for us. That's pretty much it. Stats-wise, we're just going to tell you one. I know you're probably bummed out about that. I looked up our mooring nights for the last two weeks since the last time we met and we actually are up about four hundred, almost five hundred mooring nights for this time of year from last year. So it's almost a, over a forty percent increase from the two weeks. And I'm sure that's, if you've looked out over the harbor the last couple of weekends, we've been pretty full. We've been almost full on the inside, so a lot more boats, weather's been nice, so hopefully that'll keep going through the spring break window.
I'm curious if it's just the switch, yeah, for Easter being later maybe.
What's that?
If it's the switch for Easter being a little later possibly is causing it to ramp.
Yeah, that too. You know, that does, when Easter's later in the year, you get a bigger window for spring break.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I think weather's got a lot to do with it as well. So, now to the part you've all been waiting for. These two gentlemen here are two of our newest full-time patrol officers. They're not the newest, but two of the newest. They just completed their one-year probation and they actually did a very good job on their probation, exemplary I might say. They're both great to have on, in the Harbor Department. They both work well with people, great customer service, always willing to do whatever, anything I ask them to do. So they've been really great. They both came to us with, I would say, minimal boating experience, right? Snod your head. Okay, cool. So they've learned almost all, all their boating here from us. Alloy Rodriguez over here, he started as a sanitation worker in two thousand and seven and did that for several years and then started as a harbor patrolman in, what, two thousand and twelve, I believe. No, actually, eight years ago, right? Eight years ago? Whatever the math is on that, two thousand and seventeen. So he's been a patrolman for eight years. Jose Baragon right here, he's actually been at the department for two years, a little over two years now. And he started as a part-time officer and quickly became full-time. He too has done a really great job. They're both reserve firefighters. Alloy Rodriguez here is a reserve for both LA County and City Fire. Baragon, Jose here is a reserve for the City Fire Department as well. So they've both done a great job. So now that they've passed their probation, they get their, their badges, their wallet badge and their uniform badge. So I wanted to pin it on them, but they wouldn't let me for safety reasons, I guess. I don't know, whatever it may be. So, we'll start with Alloy.
Congratulations. That's amazing. Very cool.
Congratulations, Jose. We're proud of both of them. So glad to have them. And they're both Lancers.
Yeah, they are. I know they are. Yeah. Well, and I was in a class with Alloy's sister, so.
You sure?
He's a great speaker.
Right? Come on. Thank you both. Congratulations. Just a note of congratulations and, and thank you for serving your community and continuing to do so, not just for the city, but on multiple fronts. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Yeah. Well done.
Oh man, my cheeks were, I was like smiling so much. Super proud.
Hi, Kelly.
Good evening, council. Kelly Robuffo, Contract Planner. Just here tonight to announce that we have our regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night at five o'clock here in the chambers. There are three items on the agenda tomorrow night. First item is approval resolution for site plan and a variance for demolition of an existing single-family home and construction of a new single-family home at three oh four Sumner Avenue. Item number two is a site plan and a variance to allow demolition of an existing single-family home and construction of a new at three oh six Clarissa Avenue. And third item on the agenda tomorrow evening is our study session for proposed amendments to the transient rental license ordinance, which I'll let Dave expound upon a little more. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
I think that's it. Matt's, I don't think Matt's talking again since he already spoke, right? Okay. Gave me a thumbs up. And Chief and Dave Hart are out of town this week. So, good evening, council. Just a couple of things from city manager's office. I want to address the Household Hazardous Waste Balky Item event that was held at here at City Hall on April fifth. Just some statistics on that. Again, another, another great event. It's great getting all this, all the following items off the island. We had two hundred and nine residents participate. With that, the following, eighty-one e-waste items were brought in, fifty-four gallons of pesticides, fifty, I'm sorry, two hundred and five gallons of paint, hundred and forty-seven batteries of various sizes, six gallons of cleaning products, nineteen gallons of oil and gas, sixty-four tires, and then four and a half tons of bulky items and five point seven tons of metal and appliances that were all hauled off. So, great job. Thank you, Jocelyn, Miguel, Public Works crew for, for all the help on that event and Fire Department for making lunch for all the crew that was working that day. So everybody chipped in. It was, the hours were extended a little bit from, we went from nine AM to two PM instead of noon. And I think we'll, we'll probably go from nine to one at the next one simply because it really died off after one o'clock. So again, thank you to, to all those that put that together, great event. Last week, I was off-island at the Sea Trade Conference in Miami, had a number of very positive conversations and meetings with our cruise ship partners out there. My number one topic of conversation that I engaged with all of them was addressing the city and guest expectations when those ships come to the island. We addressed a number of concerns and trends, unpleasant trends that we're seeing on certain boats and certain visits with guests. The folks we spoke with were very open to what we were suggesting. They're willing to assist both posting signs and providing information to their guests before they ever get off the ship and arrive in Avalon. One being that we're still California here. That's, that's one of the items we want them to point out because shockingly, that's not readily known from what we come to find out when we have these discussions. So in addition, I feel very good about the progress we made in terms of additional port agreements, in addition to where we're at, where we are at with Disney, which I expect a formal agreement to be brought to council, hopefully within the next thirty to forty-five days. I think we're going to see some other cruise ship lines, cruise lines requesting similar deals and we'll see what we can do with the space that we have. I also had the chance to participate more as an observer than a actual participant in the meetings that were held with all of our business representatives that went from Avalon out there regarding shore excursions. I want to thank Jim Lutjehan, who's here tonight for all the work he does leading up to these meetings. It's very positive for the city. We are a member of the Western Cruise Ship Alliance that, that does a very good job of getting the word out. The cruise ships were very engaged with us. They were very interested, obviously, in continuing to work with us. I want to thank Yoli Say, Grace Upton, Andrew Wellam, all who were there representing Avalon, did a very, very good job. And then finally, as Kelly mentioned, the Planning Commission tomorrow night will be discussing short-term rentals. This is a follow-up to the meeting that we had with council a few weeks ago, mainly the regulations that we'll be discussing with Planning Commission tomorrow will be first and foremost, the revocation process and where we're going to go with that because that will be coming to planning in their May meeting. We're not sure how many that's going to be, but we expect that to be a significant number, probably in excess of fifty revocations that we're pursuing. Where those revocations go, both with an appeal, an objection before Planning Commission, potential appeal to council, we'll let you know and get those agendized as soon as we can. We'll be talking to Planning Commission about the annual renewal fees that we spoke with you about, tier one and tier two properties requiring on-island engagement between the property owner and the guest, discussing the cap, just in generalities and really what we've seen since the prior changes were made, shifting from the CUP to the TRL. I know it was suggested by one resident at the last meeting before council that maybe we give more time to see if those changes that were made to the TRL method are making sense and taking effect. So we'll, we'll give those statistics to, to Planning Commission, have them provide their input. We'll also have recommendations and discussions concerning, you know, the, how we want to do the framework of the, the May Planning Commission meeting, that being the revocation. If it becomes too bulky with too large of numbers of them, you know, we're not looking for a four or five-hour meeting out of them, so we might have to add additional Planning Commission meetings in that month, but, but I'll get their feedback on that. I don't anticipate this to be the only, only Planning Commission meeting discussing short-term rentals. I think they'll probably want to kick it around a few times and get the word out to the public so we can get more public engagement before we bring it back to council. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember reports?
City Attorney.
Oh, city attorney, Scott.
Maybe I always forget about Scott.
I know.
Just a quick note that there's a new law regarding your budget adoption that applies to Avalon, which we have to prior to the budget. Budget have a public hearing where we identify by union all vacancies in city employment. So look for that hearing sometime before we adopt the budget. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember reports? Nothing from you this week.
I'll go, because, real quick, I will be attending the League of California Cities City Leader Summit in Sacramento next week.
Well, yeah, I don't have much to report either. I was, I went on vacation pretty much right after that jam-packed council meeting we had last two weeks ago. So I was out of town, but I, I want to give a shout out to Public Works and Jackie and Bob's crew. I mean, because I was gone for like ten days and I came back and I did notice, you know, that, that stuff is happening and it's, the town is looking good. And I would also like to give a shout out to whatever happened, but I can hear better. There's not a major echo.
Echo wasn't bad tonight, though.
I can even hear people from the podium. And so yay, whoever fixed that, whoever got to the bottom of that, I thank you, I love you to death. And because it's like spring break, I brought a future councilperson. My six-year-old granddaughter is in the audience and she just wanted to see how, how city council meetings work. So she's goofing around and playing with her tablet.
Awesome. Not too much to report for me. I have Gateway Cities cog prior to, nope, excuse me, after, so it'll be the seventh council, and then was unable to attend the recent one due to boats not operating, not being an excusable absence. So hopefully we'll be changing that. I did want to ask council if they would have, I guess, the appetite for having a resolution brought before us that would voice support for due process. For people in the United States, there's some challenging things happening across the country right now. And other than voicing support for our state attorney general and the attorneys general that are throughout the country, it is frightening to me to see people who have legal status, who have citizenship, who are residents, not having due process before being removed for alleged criminal activity that has not had a chance to go before a court. It is wrong. It should upset anyone, no matter their party. And other than doing that as a council, I'm not sure how else to address that problem. But I'm, I'm hoping that city staff can help write some legislation for a resolution in support of everyone's due process and the ability to have a fair trial when necessary.
Absolutely. Happy behind that.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to oral communication. This is a time where members of the public may address the city council. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers should limit comments to two minutes each, please. Good evening.
Thank you. Jim Lutjehan, love Catalina. Good evening, council. Kelly Robuffo, Contract Planner. Just here tonight to announce that we have our regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night at five o'clock here in the chambers. There are three items on the agenda tomorrow night. First item is approval resolution for site plan and a variance for demolition of an existing single-family home and construction of a new single-family home at three oh four Sumner Avenue. Item number two is a site plan and a variance to allow demolition of an existing single-family home and construction of a new at three oh six Clarissa Avenue. And third item on the agenda tomorrow evening is our study session for proposed amendments
Jim Lutjehan, Love Catalina Island. Good evening, Council. And I'll just add a little bit to Dave's comments about Sea Trade. Rounding out, we also were joined this year by Canrato Vega, who was in our party and always lends a lot to those conversations. And we met while we were there with Carnival, Royal Caribbean, Virgin Voyages, Princess Cruises, Disney Cruise Lines, and the largest port agency that represents the appointments for our ships to come here. Got to attend a few educational sessions. And I personally met with media from afar, Travel and Leisure, and Amazon TV. So, again, a very worthwhile enterprise overall and a good use of our time and efforts. And reminding all of you and the members of the public that our annual shred event is coming up April 28, 2025. We encourage everyone to go through your file boxes and get them ready and bring them out to Avalon Freight. But we do need you to sign up in advance because we have to estimate the weight to ship them off. So, sign-up is available on lovecatalina.com and we need you to do so, please, by April 24. And you just simply have to say, "I think I'm going to have five boxes." "I think I'm going to have four boxes." Reminder that Pride is scheduled for June 6 and 7, and our digital ad campaign has now gone live on that. And I'm happy to also share that US Bank has once again come back as our title sponsor for 2025. And the concert lineup that is confirmed so far is all populated now on lovecatalina.com and will be added to as we flush out a few more things. Our summer concert series starts June 14 with Trey Hill, a country artist, followed by Knight Rider, an 80s cover band, on July 19. And our always most popular ABBA exceptional tribute band will be on August 16. The Taste Around of Avalon is May 29, and we have just opened for restaurants to sign up for that. So, if you've got a restaurateur in your household, remind them to get themselves signed up right away. We continue to work with Pepperdine on the Sustainable Tourism Plan. We launched surveys yesterday on that and got about 20 responses right away, but that's a good start, but we need a lot more, please, from members of our business community. And a little update on the book that I shared with the mayor last time, Nightshade. It is scheduled for general release on May 20, 2025. And meanwhile, if you're chomping at the bit and didn't get one of those few advanced copies, you can go on NetGalley and it's available now as a digital reader. And I'd encourage members of our business community, I don't want to spoil anything, but if you read it and you spot your place of business on there, think about ways to enterprise on the follows, the fans who follow places that he writes about. I will be attending Tourism Advocacy Day at the Capitol on May 21. And right now, I'm the only representative of our district who has signed up. So, welcome some others. You can attend for free, other than your travel cost. So, if someone wants to join me, they're welcome to do so. And our district, by the way, includes Long Beach and Lakewood area, so I've reached out to some of my counterparts there.
I was going to ask if any of you are interested in attending. I'm unavailable that week, unfortunately, but it may be something worthwhile to consider going.
You do have a council meeting the night before and I'm going to be here for council and then jumping out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. I wanted to talk a little bit more about the computer classes that I talked about at the last meeting. I know a little bit more now. Learn Basic Tech, which is a county office sponsored by the ISD Department, is going to be on the island on May 13 and 14 to provide a sequence of computer classes. They're going to be four hours each, but at the end of it, people will be, who are eligible, will qualify for a free laptop. The classes are awesome. Other libraries have been doing this program for quite some time. I've been desperate to figure out a way to get Avalon to have it. They're going to come out on the 13th and the 14th. They're also going to have a presence, Ms. Gail doesn't know yet. They're going to have a presence at the Resource Fair, if I can chisel the table out of it. So, they've said they're going to come out and be ready so you can meet them and they can see the library where they're going to be doing the classes. I think they think it's richer than it is. We'll see. We will see. But so, that's going to be the 13th and the 14th. Please stop by the library to register. I'll need to take your name and your email and then I'll get back with you with the granular details of it. Coming up on the 24th, I'm going to have, that's actually the day of the Resource Fair, but you'll go to the fair and then you'll come to the library and listen to a concert of Americana music with a Johnny Cash tribute performer. I'm excited about that because I just love Johnny Cash. On the 17th, I think I'm going to try a blackout poetry event where I take pages from a book and then you take little magic markers and you make a poem by blotting out everything but the lines of the poem you want to write because it's National Poetry Month. Let's not forget that. On the 23rd, we'll have Chuck Liddell's Everything You Want to Know About Catalina But Were Afraid to Ask. They're getting pretty popular because we've got Sandy Putnam and Chuck together and they're talking, they talk, they banter about history. It is so fascinating to listen to. It's just, it makes, it's, I've been doing that program for like some years now and it's like, you know, crossfire. It's so interesting. It is such an interesting phenomenon. Coming up on May 22, which is a ways now, I managed to get us a Music Center grant. We're going to have a performance by a doo-wop group called The Alley Cats. They're going to be on my patio. They're going to sing some lovely songs for us. Hope people will come to that. Still doing storytimes every Saturday at 11. I also am working on, in my head, I haven't really put it on paper yet, to do a sort of one-island, one-book about Nightshade. I'm thinking about doing something. County Big might have something as well, but we'll talk. But in terms of just the library, I want to get the book out. I have in my head the idea of creating a little passport where we have little pictures of the sites of the book and then you write down the page number or where it appears in the book and then I come back and stamp it and give you, oh, I don't know, an ice cream or a gift card or something. I don't know what. So, we're going to have a whole bunch of stuff like that. I think that's way more than two minutes. So, I'm going to say thank you very much. Thanks, as always, to the Friends of Avalon Library for our support and the programs we do. There's a meeting of the Friends next week, right? Tuesday? So, please come and join us. We could use some new members. And thank you very much.
And Michael, I took Nightshade on vacation with me. I'm almost done with it. It's pretty good. Yeah. Yeah, I like it.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Councilmembers, staff, and those attending or viewing tonight's meeting. My name is Mike Lansing, recently retired after 30 years of being Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Los Angeles Harbor, serving San Pedro, Wilmington, Harbor City, Harvard Gateway, and La Mida. I'm here tonight to briefly explain the commitment of myself and working already with a number of you to establish and grow our proposed Catalina Boys and Girls Club, supporting K-12 students with proven youth and young adult support skills development opportunities. These opportunities will eventually include daily after-school academic support, safe spaces, fine arts and crafts, music, mentorship, sports, college and career priorities, pathways, and more. Given some of the space limitations here, our group has identified some existing programs and locations in Avalon where our youth development staff will basically piggyback on those spaces and programs that are already attracting and positively serving youth with daily opportunities. And our team will help individually develop even more support for those young people. Our youth development staff, which will all be residents of Avalon, will be committed to this important and free daily resource for youth and high school students of Avalon. This Catalina Boys and Girls Club is a very good idea and is being embraced already by many of you here in the community and community leaders. But given some space and funding limitations, we will start small and grow the Catalina Boys and Girls Club over time as space and funding also grows. No doubt, the biggest hurdle we face in starting this endeavor is raising the $350,000 needed to fully fund the first year of the Catalina Boys and Girls Club. I would truly hope to start this endeavor by the coming school year. We have to be realistic and decide whether or not that date is going to be reasonable or if we have to be smart and start with the slow growth and opportunities available to the youth. We already have a $100,000 matching grant towards that first year. It's actually over the first four years. And we will spend most of our efforts as a team in working to secure the additional dollars so that we could not only begin the program, but hopefully eventually have a more expanded program serving more high school students. I've been on the island at least for the last couple of months, every other week, in meetings to reach this goal. I will continue to do so in the weeks and months and hopefully years ahead as we successfully establish and grow the Catalina Boys and Girls Club. If you see me around town, please feel free to come up and introduce yourself and just feel free to ask me any questions and discuss this endeavor. Special thanks to Councilwoman De La Rosa for passion and extended efforts already in support of this effort to establish and better serve the youth of Avalon is duly noted and truly appreciated. I thank you for this time. And since I'm not a Catalina resident, but a 60-year continual lucky person to be able to enjoy this island, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me now or as you see me walking around. Good to see you, Michael.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
And I did want to just say thank you. He's doing this only because he has a connection, which is amazing because that's always, I feel like, important when people do come over to the island, when they understand how we are because we are different in our own ways. But all just a commitment that he's already made and not giving up because I know that we do have a lot of resources. That's one of the things that I love to say to people when I meet people from the mainland over town, that our community is resilient. We make things work with what we have and we do a damn good job at it. But we're also so deserving of everything else. And that's why I also feel so passionate about this because not only have we done a great job, but these kids deserve to see everything that's out there. And so, I'm committing to whatever I have to do. I know it's going to be a lot of work. Like you said, it might be a slow pace, but it's going to be worth it.
Is this something we could look at adding potentially a line item to the budget this year and/or for subsequent years to be able to perhaps have a stake in the game as well? I think it's a program that's worth supporting enough that the financial side of it from the city makes sense.
We should have skin in the game.
Right. Because hopefully, having skin in the game also asks everyone else to put skin in the game, too.
Yeah, absolutely. And anyone that is, like he said, that would like to ask Mike any questions, he has so much experience and knowledge. I'm so grateful because he also started from the ground up, which is usually how we have to start. So, it's a perfect match. Thank you, Mike.
That reminds me of one question, though. So, if we wanted to, if people wanted to donate to raise this $350,000 that we need, I know that the Boys and Girls Club has been around for a long time. It's probably, most likely, a nonprofit, right?
Yeah, that would be a question. Mike, if you want to come back up, please.
Okay to ask, yeah.
Yes, the Catalina Boys and Girls Club would be best if it was under an already-existing organization, whether LA Harbor, Long Beach, Metro Los Angeles, because they're already established 501(c)(3)'s. So, if you make a donation, it's automatically tax-deductible. We wouldn't want to put anybody in a position where they think they're donating to something that's, and then they can't take it. I hate to say it that way, but they can't take it off their taxes. So, we will definitely make that connection first, obviously, before we ask anybody to actually give us money, although we'll take pledges at any time and collect later if people want to make that kind of commitment, whether it's the city or individuals, companies, or whatever.
I was just curious because, as a lot of you know, Southern California Edison does it very philanthropic. And we do have, you know, the season of giving, which should be coming up soon. And we, the whole company is allowed to donate to any nonprofits. So, I was just wondering if there was something I could send around? If it was an existing...
It was Avalon-specific, but yeah.
Yeah, something. But anyway, we can chat.
We will definitely, we have to get that existing organization commitment that we could be under their umbrella for lots of reasons, but especially for those donation opportunities, so.
Okay, perfect.
We're working on that as we're trying to raise the money. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on. Anyone else for oral communication? We'll move on to the consent calendar, please.
Okay, I think we only have two items on the consent calendar. First one being approval of the minutes from the March 18, 2025, and April 1, 2025, regular city council meetings. And item two, approve total expenditures for March 24, 2025, through April 4, 2025, totaling $1,234,006.22.
Can I get a motion in a second or does anyone want to?
I'll make a motion to approve items 1 and 2 on the consent calendar.
Hold a second.
Second in, call for the vote.
Four ayes, one absent, Mayor Marshall.
Item number three?
Under General Business, item number three, on-call engineering services contract. Mr. Greenlaw.
Good evening again, Bob Greenlaw. This item proposes to award a new three-year contract to our existing on-call consultant, ESG Engineering. So, some background for the audience and for folks at home. The City of Avalon has several capital improvement program projects and ongoing maintenance needs that occasionally require technical areas of service. Currently, the city has one on-call engineering firm to assist with engineering in civil, mechanical, electrical, geotechnical, and structural disciplines and various other services that they provide. Ultimately, is staff's desire to have an approved list of firms for general and specialized technical areas of service. Many of the city's projects have a specific timeline to adhere to. So, we got to do these things quickly sometimes, whatever the desires of the council, the community, or the direction of the city manager. Sometimes, the need for services of limited scope and timeline making it beneficial for a cost and a timing perspective to have someone on-call. So, just like, ultimately, like staff, you can reach out, but they're on-call. Alternatively, a request for proposals for technical areas of engineering service could be solicited for each project and task. This option requires additional time and administrative preparation for each contract and can be cost-prohibitive for certain projects that have specific timelines and require immediate services. Usually, we'll go out for something bigger when there is a certain type of funding, like federal funding, and it's a larger project federal funding, and it's a larger project, then it is worth going out there and, but on our everyday services, because otherwise, as an engineer, here I am, but I need other staff involved to help us do all the work that we're doing. So ESG Engineering is currently engaged with city staff on a number of complex CIP projects, which you know of, that are in our CIP budget. Due to the level of nuance and the timing of these projects, city staff believe there will be no competitive advantages to bidding the on-call engineering services contract at this time. So Avalon Municipal Code 3-4.111(c)(C) outlines an exception from bidding and competitive procedures, and so, and what that says is if a competitive market does not exist or the city will not gain a competitive advantage by using formal contract bid or other competitive procedure, or where a project, goods, or service may be deemed more economically and efficiently without the procedure, the city may dispense with formal bidding or other competitive procedures. So, and that's what we're asking here. We think that since we're fully engaged with all these projects and they're, right now, it's all integrated between our current on-call consultant, that if we have a larger project comes on, we can reach out and get some other RFPs going, but for our bread-and-brother type projects that we're working on right now, we got to continue our relationship, and that's going to be at least for this three years. So the total not to exceed for all task orders that we've identified for each year is $800,000 for each fiscal year. And it's important to note that these are driven by the approved budget, so it's not like we're approving, we have an $800,000 spend, but we have to go back to approved budget, which you approve within the CIP, and then we just issue task orders. So it's a very common occurrence in government services to do this type of work like this. So that's what we're asking for tonight, is to continue that relationship. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we make the affirmative finding that the city will not gain a competitive advantage by bidding and can contract work more economically or efficiently pursuant to Avalon Municipal Code, Section 3-4.11(c)(C), and two, award a professional services contract for on-call engineering for an amount not to exceed an annual cumulative total for all services of $800,000 to ESG Engineering, Inc., for a three-year term.
Hold on a second.
Hold on a second, and call for the vote.
Four ayes, one absent, Mayor Marshall.
Item number four.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Item number four is the Cross-Channel Warfage Ordinance Discussion. It was previously discussed at a prior meeting and earlier tonight during the budget presentation by Mr. Baker. Matt.
I don't have a presentation prepared, it was what we presented last week, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions, do you counsel?
I read it, it's like what we talked about.
Straightforward and what we discussed.
I would just like to add, I think it's already been said, but just confirm that Matt and I both had a conversation, conference call with the Express staff, they're fully aware of this, we've discussed it, and that's actually where the September 2nd start date came from, is their request, so.
And then, yeah, and do we have any comments from the public on the item? Not seeing anyone? All right, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce and waive all further readings of an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 10-2.402(a) of the Avalon Municipal Code, use fees for harbor cross-channel passengers and adoption of findings under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Four ayes, one absent, Mayor Marshall.
All right, and item number five.
The final item tonight is a return item from what we discussed, I believe, last fall, that being a first reading of an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for use of Avalon beaches and parks. At this time, if you recall, we discussed at the end of really last season, addressing a large number of complaints we received through the summer months regarding extraordinarily large shade structures and tents that would be set up on the beach, often left there overnight, days at a time. They had guy wires extending from taking further access away from the beach for others, just equipment being left on the beach, and we discussed reducing that or at least regulating that. So that's what this is, is amendments to our existing ordinance regarding shade coverings and devices, and then also allowing larger gatherings by permit and just general provisions regarding conduct in city parks. So we have the ordinance attached there with the Chapter 10-8 amendments regarding public use of beaches and parks. Essentially, it would limit the umbrellas, which is the bulk of these changes, to six feet, whether it's in diameter, if it's a square tent, six feet, and no, and no sides on any of them, and they'd have to be completely open on all sides. Any questions?
The only question I had, which we had discussed offline, Dave, was just the, the, from previous ordinances that are there, gatherings greater than 20 people, permits are required for that, that that would be at the discretion of the city manager to waive for certain things like 4th of July, where you have large families or large parties.
Right, and some of those, we would also, we factor in that if it's on the 4th of July, it probably might not be the best day to hold a different event, you know, that might interrupt that. So it gives us the chance to regulate those based on what's going on.
Right.
So the large gatherings would essentially be like weddings or something like that, that we see organized.
Already, yeah. Okay. Yeah. All right. Any other questions? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll do it.
You're the best, Michael. I had to scroll back up.
Recommended action is introduce and waive all further readings of an ordinance establishing Chapter 10-8 and 10-9 of the Avalon Municipal Code, setting forth rules and regulations for use of Avalon beaches and parks.
Hold on a second.
Hold on a second.
Four ayes, one absent, Mayor Marshall.
With that, we are adjourned.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job, Lisa Tony.
Thank you.